All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call to order the work session of April 20th, 2015. Make a quick report out from our closed session. Council discussed city attorney billing and made a decision to surplus a piece of city property. And that was the extent of our closed session discussions. The next item on our agenda is the Malone annexation. Mr. Jakubiac, you want to come forward? Mr. Holland, Mr. Parker, anybody else that's here for that? You all want to come forward?
I don't think Mr. Miller's here for that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Laura.
I'll go ahead and start this. Recently, I received an annexation petition from Dana and Patrick Malone. This is, I also received the required annexation fees. This is approximately 2.7 acre site located on the northwest quadrant of Snow Hill Road and East College Avenue, and also where Lincoln Avenue comes into play there. The annexation plan includes approximately 4,700 square foot fast food establishment and approximately 9,100 square foot commercial retail structure. Provided the council with the Compton County zoning map, City of Salisbury zoning map, aerial map, location. And if you have any questions, Mr. Parker's here along with Chris. Do you have any questions? And when Tom turned this over to me, I think it was probably last summer, this annexation, so I did, I put it together in annexation team, which includes representative of Public Works, Salisbury Police Department, Fire Department, someone for planning zone. And we met probably a month and a half or so ago and got some of their inputs and recommendations also.
Where's this again? Where's this again? Was it near?
Catty Corner Rural Farms at Snow Hill Road.
Oh, okay, I got you. I know where it's at.
It's a big chimney, brick chimney sitting out there.
That's a way to put it.
A chimney.
It's a big brick chimney.
How does select commercial county zone, how does that, what would the comparative zoning classification be in the city?
Comparative would be general commercial.
Okay.
And the comprehensive plan for the city calls for commercial as the recommended land use.
Yes.
Clear continuity among the zoning categories and the recommended use. Interesting thing about this annexation is that it takes a notch away from the big doughnut hole that is out there from Park to Beagland and East College, Big Wedge. We always thought that these annexations were good without considering their merits, but only in the sense that they help close in or take away these doughnut holes and make the city's boundaries more coherent.
So that's how we get there, one property at a time, right? One step at a time.
But some were bigger than others, and eventually they make their way into the city.
So, Mr. Parker, just out of curiosity, do we know who the intended occupant or tenant is?
At this time, no. The Malones are two brothers who have recently inherited the property from their recently deceased mother.
Oh, my gosh.
They.
She was my Sunday school.
Yes, yeah, as was a lot.
Those are something.
Dana and Patrick. And they've inherited the property. They are going to sell it, but they've elected through the advice of their realtor to get it annexed and get it, at least get some of the ambushes out of the way so that anybody that comes in could develop it. So they've asked us to plan it out. What you're looking at is roughly resemble the end of the product, you know, probably two pad sites or one large pad site, but something that's in conformance with the commercial district.
And the entrance and exit will be on Lincoln and College, further up College, not right at that intersection.
Yes, ma'am. We've chosen to align it with the entrance across the street to that strip center.
Yeah. Taylor's Barbecue.
Yes.
Now you know where we're at, don't you?
This is a very draft conceptual plan. This is not your typical concept plan discussion, and we haven't had a chance to really work through with the applicant any particular issues that we might have, although staff has looked at it 30,000-foot level and said it's, you know, it's okay from staff's standpoint to go forward. But you might think about this as a major intersection, high visibility location, and worthy of some important landscaping treatment and other treatment to, in response to its site and its context. So maybe this don't want a management facility up at the location is not the best proposed site plan. So maybe we get away from some of the details on this plan, allow the planning staff to get to a better plan in the future, and those things that are really important to the city we will try to get incorporated.
So does that mean, are you saying, don't, we shouldn't concern ourselves with these details right now because this is conceptual, or you're saying we should approve with, are you suggesting that we approve with certain recommendations?
Well, today's work session is not meant to approve it.
Right, right. I mean, I understand.
We're just very early stages, and with the big, in the big picture, when we do these concept plans, we like to get the basic concepts worked out, but we don't want to place you in the position of approving details on the plan that may make things more complicated for the planning commission or the staff when they do the site plan review. Whether this plan is, rises to any concern, you know, whether it suggests any details that might not be in the best interest of the city, I don't know about that just yet. But if you give us the go-ahead to move forward in discussing this in a critical way and developing annexation agreement, we'll really evaluate this concept plan. And typically, some minor tweaks are made in the weeks and months leading up to your next meeting.
Understood.
I just wanted to share my concern about, the first thing when I read it was that intersection, fast food, especially that one, there's that little pork chop island at the edge, so when you're trying to turn there and the traffic's coming up, Beagland to turn it, they're going forward on College, it can be a little tricky there, and then if you add an entrance or an exit, that was my only, would be my only concern starting moving forward with any of this is the, other than that, I'm probably okay, I just did have some concern about that.
And I was thinking about the same thing that Laura was mentioning with the intersection. It looks like the curb is being pulled back on Route 12, is that right, on Snow Hill Road, for the turn, the right-hand turn on to?
The current proposal is to leave Route 12 the way it is, but along College, as we get to our entrance, we have an XL deselling. Now, the Route 12 frontage will be subject to SHA. So, you know, again, as Chris mentioned, we haven't started to embark on all of those fact-finding missions until we can get a general blessing from this body. But as we move through the process, yeah, SHA is going to have their comments, and we'll have to comply with whatever they want us to do.
All right. I mean, given how early it is in the process, and I would be inclined to encourage this annexation to move forward, are there other questions or concerns from council?
Nobody.
Okay.
It's been years since I've started wondering why this place wasn't developed.
Yeah, yeah. I was looking at it the other day. It's a logical piece of property to develop. Good stuff.
Saying earlier, it's not often you get one where it's, what else are we going to put there?
Right. All right, excellent. Well, so there's council consensus to allow this to continue to move forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for having us.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks for waiting.
Next item on our agenda is election 2015 redistricting update. Mr. Tillman, how we doing?
Well, I spoke to the attorney for the ACLU the other day, and she told me that it was pretty clear that the NAACP was going to be substituted as their new client. She sent back, this time, a second version of the motion that we would file jointly, and I've got, I take issue with a couple things in there, but not a lot. It's basically just sort of glorifies the ACLU's role in the redistricting. But I don't, I don't think that's really necessary.
Okay.
But, you know, and I don't think that's something that they're going to demand putting in, but, you know, I think we've got the agreement worked out. They apparently have a client, and she advised me that there was no way anybody could challenge the city's current district. That was her opinion.
That was, those are her words.
Those are her words.
All right. That's true.
On the flip side of that, the language that you take some issue with, is it worth spending the time and money to worry about taking it out? Or can we just send it?
I think it would not be in the city's best interest to say some of the things that they've stuck in there, that they didn't demand earlier, but.
What were they? What were the, what were the things?
Let me see, I've got it right here. The, the city and the ACLU believe the five district plan offers all Salisbury voters a fair opportunity to elect their representatives of choice, and given the demographics of today, better conforms to the goals of the Voting Rights Act than did the two-district system. I think we all are in agreement that it gives everyone a fair choice, but I don't think the city wants to make any admission whatsoever that the prior system was illegal.
Okay.
And I mean, that, first of all, that was a system that was initially agreed to by all parties then. So I don't think we should admit that. That's the primary thing.
Okay. Makes sense to me.
And that was something, that was something new that they just stuck in the latest version, but I don't think they're going to demand that.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. So what's the timeline now at this point for getting it to the court?
She wouldn't commit to me. I tried to get her to give me a date, but, and I told her, she said, "I'm still toying with it," and I said, "Well, send me what you have," and that's what she did last week. I think, I don't remember what day I got it, Friday, she sent it to me. But I'm going to push her to get it done. I mean, I see no reason, if the, if the NAACP is on board, there's no reason why this can't be done very quickly.
Okay. You push her to get it done, I thought we had to file.
We, no, I mean, it's a joint motion, so she has to sign it for it to be a joint motion. So, but, you know, I've, she's been telling me all along that there's not a problem, and now she's told me that the NAACP is going to step forward, so.
Well, let's keep pushing her on it.
Okay.
All right. We'll continue to discuss until we get that thing resolved. Our next item on our agenda is, or I'm sorry, are there any other questions from council? Okay. Next item on our agenda is changes to the noise ordinance. And Mr. Holland, is he in the hallway?
Yeah.
Is Ms. Phillips here too?
Yeah.
Can she join us for that conversation? Susan, can you join us for this conversation? Can you both? This is noise ordinance.
Oh, the noise ordinance.
No, it's you, but I have a question for.
At least it was coming this way.
Okay. All right. The floor's yours.
Okay, recently or in the past several months, the city's been receiving complaints regarding construction activities of residential projects currently under construction, and it was our March 2nd meeting, we first came to the council regarding making some changes to the noise ordinance, and when we left, we pretty much had our, you know, directives of how we wanted this revised. And what it's done, it's given pretty much from Monday through Friday, left the hours between 7:00 in the morning, 6:00 p.m. in the evening. Saturdays, it does allow people to, it's not just work, but to work noisily, I guess, between the hours of 9:00 and 6:00, and it also allows people to, you know, do construction work between 12:00 and 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. And if there's, should determine that, you know, public health and safety will not be impaired during construction activities, that they could receive a permit to work in hours that aren't established in this ordinance.
So are there, is there currently an ability for you to issue a building permit that allows individuals to do work that is beyond those hours so long as they don't violate the noise ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I assumed that.
I assumed that, yeah.
But it's not explicit.
Like if I would issue, to build a deck on the back of your house, I mean, naturally, probably most of it was going to be done during the weekend, when you have free time.
What about, yeah, and even painting that deck, I mean, that would not be a noisy activity.
Paint noisily.
But the way, I guess the way I read it now is that that would be prohibited.
Actually, this ordinance doesn't prohibit it. What it says is that construction activity during these hours is presumed to violate the noise ordinance. So if somebody was a lone painting contractor, painting the side of a building with a can of paint, and someone complained that he was violating the noise ordinance, I think he would have the opportunity to come to court and say, "I wasn't, I was making less noise than one of the homeowners cutting the grass." And I don't think a judge would find him in violation.
Right. So this is why I think that it's important to add, you know, we've got the section on chapter 8.20.020, prohibited noises enumerated, where it lists all the different, you know, types in section I or paragraph I as construction or repairing of buildings, and, you know, so that we're articulating what the different types of noise are. But, but in section 8.20.010, unreasonably loud noises prohibited A, where it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to make blah, 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 blah," within the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, I mean, I feel like this is where it's important for us to say at the end, what I've seen in numerous noise ordinances elsewhere, in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet or more from the building or structure in which it is located, and that that shall be a presumed violation of this section. To give some way to measure, rather than just a.
What I was going to add was my next comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. It means to you, Duncan.
No, you already said it. No, you know, what, how do you measure? What is, what is too much noise and what's an acceptable noise level?
And nothing in our code currently says how you measure that. However, Chief Duncan, I'm not sure if you can speak to this, but I think the standard practice is that 50 feet, you know, or some measurement is given, and from a distance of 50 feet from the property line, if the noise is audible, then it's considered a violation of the noise.
There are instances where ordinances do call for, sorry?
Yeah, do you mind coming to the microphone?
Afternoon.
Thank you.
So there are instances where ordinances do call for some type of noise meter type of device to measure the decibel levels from a particular distance from the property line as well.
I read that as well in several, you know, I looked at a bunch, and in quite a few cases, they, I mean, it says, "This is the acceptable decibel level in residential zone, you know, R8, and this is the acceptable noise level in general commercial," and this is.
Correct.
And, you know, which is fine, but that requires the acquisition of equipment.
It does.
That becomes slightly more complicated, and I think, you know, given that the current practice, as I understand it, is the 50 feet, putting that in law actually, you know, is something I found in various cases in other communities, so that makes sense to me. I mean, it's still a little bit subjective, you know.
It is.
I can hear from 50 feet away.
Correct.
But.
Correct.
It's something rather than just saying, you know, any noise which annoys.
Would you want to say disturbing and audible? Well, I mean, because what are you going to do when your neighbor cuts his grass?
Sure, it says, "In such a manner as to be."
Well, this is a.
Right, right.
Protection, including excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building.
No, 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 this would be not in, not in section 8.20.020, but 010. So, so that it would be both. If, if what I read, which, you know, was language that I took from other places, I think it was a mishmash, but it says, you know, it's the language as written, and instead of the sentence ending with, "of the city of Salisbury." So it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any unreasonably loud," I didn't write that, "any unreasonably loud noise or any noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet or more from the building or structure in which, in which it is located, shall be a pre- and a faci- violation of this section." I don't even know if that's necessary.
Seems to be, would be subjective.
I think that last piece would have done.
Yes, very much so.
But it's, but today, it's just noise. This says from 50 feet. If it's, if it's doing any of those things from 50 feet. And again, that's what's in.
I would make sure there was any of, not all of, that it's clear that it's not, you don't have to be annoying and disturbing and, you know, because somebody will say, "Well, it's not."
It already, yeah, it already says that either.
I don't have it in front of me, so.
How far is 50 feet?
Very short.
So if someone's putting up a fence or building a doghouse. Correct. And then the neighbor wants to be nasty and say he's disturbing the peace of this.
Well, they have hours to do it within, so they can't get out there at 5:00 in the morning and build a doghouse.
Yeah, that's essentially.
Lots of protection.
With, with the section that's been amended now, or the section that we have before us that's been amended, it now gives explicit hours, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. right now. 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, and 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday.
I didn't recall having Sunday in there. Talking about individuals maintaining their own property, Sunday makes sense, but when you're talking about commercial activity, which is considerably louder, you've got 20, 30 people on the site hammering, banging, moving equipment, moving, not just somebody building a doghouse.
Well, if I may, I, I think there's a difference, because you, there's a lot of construction that goes on, doesn't make any noise. Painting, all those kinds of things don't make any noise. And, and again, from a business point of view, and looking at the generation of new business and economic growth, the more jobs they can complete, then the more money comes into the city, and the jobs get finished quicker. So I think there's a balance, yes, there's definitely a balance that has to be maintained, but I think that there's room for those areas. If you're going to finish up a job, and again, from a practical point of view, if you're finishing up a job and you've, all you have to do is paint trim, and it's, you got a half a day on Sunday to finish it up, rather than bring your whole crew in on Monday, where you could start a new job, that makes a huge difference in terms of the efficiency and the profit of the, of the company.
I agree, but then we're talking, we're not talking about the kinds of things that we're addressing here that are noisy. It's the noise issue when they're just starting the construction, when the concrete mixer's out there, when they're laying the, putting up the walls and doing the hammering on the roof. I'd like one day of rest personally, where I don't have to hear somebody hammering. If I want to sleep till 3:00 in the afternoon, I don't have to hear for 20 hours, for six hours, or what is it? Yeah, 12 to 6.
12 o'clock till 6.
12 to 6 on Sunday.
If I may, Chief and I had an opportunity to talk about this, and really, the best way to go here, and I'm not necessarily suggesting we ever complicate this, but is with a noise meter and a prescribed decibel level, because otherwise, it's just too subjective, because officer arrives on the scene, and he may not necessarily believe that the sound is disturbing or injurious, but the person calling, complaining may say that it is. So then, when we get into court, where are we? And Chief, we talked about this, the equipment is not that expensive.
Potometer is not expensive.
No, it's not.
Not that expensive, and it puts you on a very solid foundation when you attempt to prosecute a citation.
Yes.
Because you've measured the distance, you've exceeded the decibel level, you have a pretty cut and dry case. And then, to go back to the complaint, and say, "We've checked, I'm sorry, it may be offensive to you, but they're not in violation," so.
So let me, let me make sure, okay, so that would.
That's not, that's not how it's written, now I realize that.
So essentially, we would leave the 8.20.010 as it stands, and then follow that with something like the following limits on, the following limits on decibels will be applied by zoning, broad zoning classifications, like industrial, commercial, residential?
Correct.
Okay.
And then link to particular days of the week.
And then link that to.
Correct.
Then you got a chart, and it's clear, and either it's there or it's not there.
That's right.
And there's no judgment.
So the period of time, however, where there's really no cap on, on noise is still in question in my mind, based on what Laura said. 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, there's, there's really no limit.
Well, we discussed that it still would be subject to.
You have to understand, this paragraph is a presumption. So when you go to court on immunity, you know, in this case, it would be a misdemeanor, and you go before the judge, if you're doing construction during the hours when you're not supposed to, the court is to presume that you were being overly noisy. But if the person were to show that they were just painting the trim on a house, and there was no real noise, and it was just irritating the neighbor because he was there, not because he was making noise, he would be found not guilty. This is just a presumption, so that the landowner isn't forced to say, you know, how noisy is construction? So, and it really leaves it up to the discretion of the judge to decide whether the person is acting reasonably or not. I think most judges would allow someone to build a doghouse, you know, between, you know, 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, if they were doing it themselves, versus bringing in backhoes and, you know, digging a pool. At that point, I think this presumption would apply, and the contractor would be found to have violated the noise ordinance. But that, that's really what the current code does. It really leaves it to the discretion of the judge who's hearing the case as to whether or not the person was being unreasonably loud.
But can't we make it more clear in here so we're not spending money in court defending these?
Right, yeah. The whole purpose of this ordinance was not to rewrite the whole noise ordinance, it was just to solve the issue of the weekday, weekend. That's all this attempted to do. Certainly, we can rewrite the noise ordinance to achieve any goal that you want to achieve, but that wasn't the purpose of this particular ordinance. It was, I, I had a much more limited directive, I thought, when I was asked to draft it.
You did, and we, we were going to just fix the weekday issue and then address the noise ordinance separately because it could get so complicated.
Right, but we're going to do it all in one shot, Emily.
Okay.
We're not going to hear this 22 times over the next few years, like we've done with other things.
Let's, you know, protect the people from unreasonable noise, keep people out of court, keep ourselves out of court, and just have an objective determination when it's necessary. End of story.
It won't be difficult to find a decibel noise ordinance to use as a.
So what I want to do in the meantime, though, is I want us to have consensus around the rest of the changes, so that we're just plugging in a little chart.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's where we need to get, you know, this needs to not be one of those things that gets dragged out forever, like, you know, towing or false alarms. So, all right, in, in the section I on, or paragraph I on construction or repairing of buildings, there is the outstanding question of Sunday, and ensuring that a building permit, as you suggested, Bill, a building permit can allow work to happen so long as it doesn't violate the noise ordinance. Okay, all right, well, that, that helps quite a bit. The other question that I had is for Susan, just regarding, you know, I think at one point, pieces of this code referenced the housing official. Just want to make sure that we're not creating work for three departments, or a role for three departments. I want to make this as simple as possible. You know, do you see a role for the housing official in making a determination of when, whether or not there's a violation?
I don't.
You should just slide your chair away from the table.
And you, and you absolutely can.
And that will answer the question.
Yeah.
Line 35 is where it is, right here. And I don't, and I have, actually have not read the ordinance because it was.
Right.
I didn't have anything to do with it, so I, I don't because this pertains to the building.
So I don't know if it was a draft version or. So I don't know if it was a draft version or what, but I've, I've got a couple of different copies of drafts, and one of them references the housing.
If you want to change it, your building official is.
Does it currently say housing official?
Yeah, it currently says.
Current code calls for that.
Yeah, like thirty-two, thirty-five, it does. It says Neighborhood Services Code.
All right, we need to change that to building official.
Yeah, I see it.
All right.
Just with regard to construction and repair, that one subsection, because the general.
Yes.
Code is enforced by Neighborhood Services.
Police Department.
Or, yeah.
In reference to chapter eight, yeah, eight.
So the building official will just be responsible for issuing.
Right.
Uh, the, the exceptions, basically.
So line thirty-five.
Okay.
Okay. And then the.
And thirty-two.
And again, there's still the, the outstanding question of Sunday, but the, the other piece of this, eight point two zero point one three zero violation, any violation of this chapter shall be punishable as a misdemeanor. And this is where our conversation last time went about stating that upon a second violation, well, so there are a couple of different ways this could be written, but any violation of this chapter may also be punishable as a municipal infraction, and saying upon a second violation of section eight point two zero point zero two zero I, construction or repairing of buildings, the building official can consult, the building official may suspend or revoke an active building permit. Now, is that something that needs to be written into this, or can you do that anyway?
You can issue stop work in accordance with.
Can, can a misdemeanor trigger you to issue stop work if, you know?
If, if we make the building permit dependent upon their compliance with the law, if they fail to comply with the law, he can issue a stop work.
Okay, so we don't need to add that?
Well, maybe in the bill, in the, if we don't have the requirement that they, is, is it in there already as far as the building permit, that they have to, no, we would need to add that to the building permit.
It doesn't say applicable, that they have to follow applicable, applicable laws? To get a building permit?
Does it need to be stated?
So, so you would have no mechanism to decide, I mean, if somebody was to say, forget, forget you.
Keep them handy.
I mean, you have stop work notice for zoning ordinance, stop work notice for building code violation, then you have a stop work notice for chapter, section of the city code.
Okay, okay. All right, so you do have, all right, good, good.
Any chapter, any section that's applicable. So that's, you just write in what it is.
All right, and this would be in applicable section. Okay, all right. So then the only outstanding additions or changes need to be the, the addition of the decibel definitions, some breakdown there. And then the second piece is the question of Sunday. And I'd be fine removing Sunday, now that I understand that work could happen, so long as it doesn't violate noise. And we do have a construction expert in the room. Mr. Miller, would you, do you have any comment?
Well, yeah, respectfully, Laura, you're, you're right, and everybody wants to have quiet enjoyment of their land.
Would you say?
Dwight Miller with Gillis Gelferson. Everybody deserves to have quiet enjoyment of their land, but keep in mind, first, it's this winter. Lots of days, construction industry wasn't able to work at all, whereas other people that had inside jobs were able to work. That Saturday and Sunday may be the only time those people get a chance to work to support their families and get their forty hours of work in. So please be careful on condensing the hours that a construction industry employee can work, because they won't be able to support their families, which means we won't have quality work, which means the city of Salisbury and Waukesha County will not be looked upon as a builder-friendly area, and nobody's going to want to build here, because it'd just be too restrictive. A noise ordinance is, is perfectly, work around noise ordinances in lots of different municipalities. They have no problems with that. But, you know, there's, today or this morning, a lot of crews didn't show up for work. And a lot of them started up around ten o'clock, and they, they, they need their right to try to get their hours in. You don't want them working too many off-hours where building and housing and zoning can't come and inspect it to make sure it's being done correctly, but you still want them to get that project built, because I think Jack said earlier, the sooner that project is completed, sooner revenue starts coming back into the city. And the construction activity itself is a very temporary discomfort, if you will. And it's, it's, you know, the, the framing is a small portion of it. But you're, you're right, the framing can be intrusive, but if, if, you know, seven o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, or nine o'clock, as you've got it written now, and even at twelve o'clock on Sunday, people home from church, if people want to work, they can work. Also, we want to limit the calls that everyone here will be getting, well, they're working. Well, they're laying carpet, they're painting, they're installing, you know, cabinets. Things that are quiet, but you don't want to give someone the opportunity to become burdensome in calling people on things that really doesn't need to be addressed.
Right, and we talked about that the last time, I'm sorry.
Right.
We talked about that last time, the difference between inside work and the outside work from the excavating the land to, to the building itself, can, can be pretty noisy. Once they're inside, then that, that's different, but we didn't, we didn't put any differentiation in here for that, other than by the noise. Because.
And there's going to be some things that could be above and beyond any contractor's control, if you will, like a dumpster comes in, picks them up, and they back up. The other morning, we got a call where a rental company was picking up one of the subcontractor's machines at five o'clock in the morning. Fired the machine up, and all the backup beepers went off like they're supposed to, and, you know, it was disturbing at five o'clock in the morning.
I get that.
But there's some things you just don't have any control over.
Well, it's, it's interesting, looking at the noise ordinance, looking at the noise section of our code. I mean, th- those noises, you know, like the delivery of boxes and the picking up of dumpsters, those are addressed in other, you know, sections of this code. So, I mean, you know, that, that wouldn't, that doesn't fall, in my opinion, under the, the holder of a building permit. That, that falls under, you know, that contractor who is there to pick up a, a roll-off or something.
Yes, we don't, we didn't want to create, you know, you're saying, you know, for the second violation, it's, X, X happens. Well, one of those violations were, we didn't even know they were coming.
Right.
You know, you call for pickup, and they just happen to be the area, they, you know. So, but, you know, inherently, when we have heavy equipment, because of OSHA and MSHA, they all make lots of noise. Over and above just the noise of the engines, unless they're supposed to.
So, I mean, you know, just looking back on this conversation about Sunday for a minute, you know, currently, the code says weekdays. This, this applies weekdays. We're now defining Monday through Friday and Saturdays, since surprisingly, shockingly to all of us, a weekday can be defined to include Saturday. But, but the Sunday piece, I just want to make sure that, you know, that I'm understanding here, that a, a building permit can allow, or does allow, for, for any day of the week. But the noise ordinance would restrict when certain noisy or, you know, what we hope is soon to be objectively noisy.
Eye reading.
Right. Work would be prohibited during those hours, or, or outside of those hours. So on that basis, you know, I want to try to understand to what extent it would be injurious to you or to other builders to not be able to make that noise on, you know, Sunday morning and Sunday evening, because that's really what we're, all we're talking about.
If doing Sundays, I mean, you know, from twelve to six, that gives them six hours. You know, I look at roofers and other companies, you know, a lot of them, they, they work out of their pickup trucks, and they'll start at six o'clock in the morning. Granted, a lot of the projects that we primarily get involved in, we're not, as we are in this project, right in a bunch of neighborhoods backyards, so, and that's.
So maybe what we can do is when we, when we have our little chart.
Right.
With days of the week, maybe they're in residential zones. It's more restrictive.
Even more restrictive than other areas, right. But I still think that, that a Sunday, a group of Sunday hours would be important, because you get three or four days of rain during the week, and nobody can work outside. You know, we want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to, during a living.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm convinced to leave the Sunday hours in and to restrict it by zoning group. And we've got to be as general as possible, I would think, and try to, you know, classify categories of the, yeah, residential, commercial, industrial, as, as best as possible, rather than, you know, river, riverfront redevelopment district, and, you know. And so as best as possible, if we categorize those into three or four subcategories, that'd be, that'd be great. And then, do we need to add that to the budget? Does council need to add that, add the noise meter to the budget, or is it?
I can, let, let me get some quotes.
Okay.
On that, because there's a specified type of meter that you need, that has to be ANZI-approved, ANSI-approved.
Understood.
So let me get a quote on that.
Okay.
Chief, if I could to get a quote for the one that gives you the printout.
That and a, the, the distance reader.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
All right. Is there council consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Bill.
Chief, will that have other applications as well?
Oh, yeah. Parties and.
Parties.
Any, any noise that's now subjectively determined, we'll be able to use that. But would we need more than one? That's another thing to consider, because.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so whatever recommended number is the number we should get.
Thank you for.
Something we've talked about, too.
That was a budgetary heads-up, but one's not going to cut it.
You probably want a sidearm there, too, don't you, Bill?
Sure.
All right. Next item on our agenda is registration of non-conforming residential properties. Ms. Phillips?
Actually, Mark's going to present that one.
They had asked me to go over this one.
We're going to add, answer questions.
Okay.
All right, what's been prepared thus far is an ordinance that would amend the zoning code, basically, that would require multifamily dwellings in a single-family area to comply. By registering their, I guess, the, whatever, you know, unit that it was, that would have to be registered, and then it would also have to meet certain standards of basic safety. And if they do that, then they could continue as a non-conforming use. If they failed to register, I think within one year, if my memory serves me correctly, they would lose their status as a non-conforming use within the district. And this would apply solely to the single-family neighborhoods that are identified in the memo there. They would, I mean, the ordinance would call, it calls for an inspection that would be done as well to make sure that they meet those standards that are in the bullets that are identified. Really, the, the, I think the mayor's interest in this ordinance was that it would give the city a handle on what's out there, and anything that didn't register would basically disappear the right to maintain that. Do you have any specific questions?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there any difference between what is, what the requirements would be for a CO versus what we're asking for here?
I'm sorry, for what?
A CO.
Certificate.
Is it the same, is it different than what you, a CO would require?
Yes, it is probably different. See, these properties now, they have to comply with the building codes that are out there, but I guess what you're, what you're doing is you're saying to this individual, you know, yes, you comply with the building codes, because this place was built nineteen twenty, or whatever, which, and there were no standards, so you don't have to upgrade them. But if you're going to use it as a multifamily dwelling in a single-family neighborhood, that there are some basic, like, fire and life safety issues that have to be dealt with. The alarm, I think that, what was it, Bill, the alarms and the fire extinguishers, various things that are listed in those bullets there.
Emergency lighting.
Right, the emergency lighting, and those are all things that are literally life safety issues. This would not require them, for example, to do structural changes in the building or do anything like that to comply with the building code, but it would be different. And it's, it's just recognizing the fact that, you know, we, we do permit these multifamily uses in single-family neighborhoods to the extent that they're otherwise permitted under the code, because they predate the code. But where it becomes a, a, a safety or a threat to human life, then we're going to, we're going to have certain standards. I think it should also, well, I mean, from a, from a, from a planning standpoint, we're talking about something that is, we're talking about a, a multifamily dwelling or unit existing in a single-family neighborhood, as if that is inherently something that shouldn't happen. And from a planning standpoint, conventional wisdom is today, that that should happen as frequently as possible. That those, that you want a mix of those uses, and we want to get rid of R five, R eight, or get rid of all of those classifications. We are antiquated in that we still have a Euclidean zoning approach. You know, we, we are one of, we're becoming a dinosaur. And, you know, we, so this, I mean, this presumes that this is a bad thing.
Well, the, there's, I was going to say, there, there's a, if I remember it correctly, it's been ages since it was done, but, for example, if it was originally constructed as a multifamily dwelling, then that's okay. It's really where properties were, were converted to multifamily use. And I think that the experience of the city is that those converted properties are the ones that are the most dangerous, and, you know, have the most life safety issues that need to be addressed and at least discovered. See, this would, this, I'm sorry.
Well, this treads into a second policy area, one that we have, we have decided not to support as a council in the past, which was a request from the fire department to, in cases of non-conforming, legal non-conforming properties, to begin to, a, a categorization and a registry of them on that basis, so that firefighters, you know, had some sense of which properties were, you know, might be cut up, and, you know, again, that's, that's someone who registers and says, this is how it is, from a life safety standpoint. But, I mean, you know, that, that is also something that this council has rejected moving forward on, because, you know, the county has those responsibilities right now, and we, you know, we're looking to kind of support that collaboration and collaborative approach to this particular activity with the county. Now, I understand the value of it from a life safety standpoint, but from a, from a planning standpoint, in terms of how you compose your neighborhoods, this is, this reads very out of date. And out of touch.
I think the ordinance even says, we acknowledge that this is not a good thing for our city. I don't think that we do acknowledge that. I have a number of questions related to some of the details in here, but first and foremost, my question is, we are currently involved in a lawsuit related to this issue specifically. I have concerns that we're even discussing making any further changes to this until that's settled. Mr. Tillman, I guess the question is, is for you, and I'm not even sure what the question is, should we be talking about this?
What's the status even?
It's, it's on appeal. We lost.
Right, I remember that, but.
Yeah, it was, it was appealed to the circuit court, and the circuit court found in favor of the homeowner, found that the city was equitably estopped from enforcing the law, because, as I read the decision, because we had failed to enforce the law for so many years, we couldn't now do it. I think that the court was wrong in that decision, and I think an appellate court will either reverse the circuit court or it will change the law in Maryland, because that, that has never been the standard that was applied in the case of equitable estoppel in the past. So, I mean, I, I think we will ultimately win. One, I think one of the, this, this legislation comes out of that case to the extent that this was a property that was not, never legal in the way it was utilized as a multifamily dwelling. It, based on the square footage of the house and the, and the lot size and everything else, there was no way that this was ever legal under the Salisbury code to use it as a multifamily dwelling. But apparently, the city turned a blind eye or didn't know. The, I think the mayor's decision here to start this registry was so that the city would know where these non-conforming uses exist, to create a list that could be utilized in the future, as you indicated, for fire protection or for, for any other use, or for simply enforcing the law.
Well, I'd be interested to hear from Mr. Heath, his thoughts on that, the life safety perspective. But before that, I just want to say that, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Mitchell regarding the walking down this road before we've got resolution to that case. And I also want to assert that I believe the term estoppel was made up to confuse me. And I don't know what that, I still.
Equitable, equitable estoppel generally.
That's even, that's even more made up.
It, it's basically where the city took some action to mislead the homeowner and, or, you know, that's where it's generally applied, and zoning estoppel generally. And zoning estoppel generally applies where someone wants to come to your town and build something that you don't want, and they, they break ground on the project, and then the legislative body passes a law prohibiting it in that zone. And in those cases, the court has held that the city was estoped from preventing this construction from going forward of that particular use, whatever it was.
Okay.
There, it is, it's, it's been, the courts in Maryland have been very reluctant to apply that estoppel principle, extremely reluctant. And, you know, that's, I don't, I think that what the circuit court did in this particular case was extended about as far as you could go. And I, I feel pretty confident that the Court of Special Appeals, or if not the Court of Special Appeals, the Court of Appeals would reverse it, because the Court of Special Appeals in the past has come down closer to the side of this decision by the, by the circuit court, but the Court of Appeals has consistently said no. So, and we're at the Court of Special Appeals level right now.
When will, when will that be heard?
It's been heard. We're waiting, and it can take anywhere from a few months to a year to get your decision from them, and we haven't gotten one yet.
When was that heard?
Maybe in January, I think.
It was January 12.
Yeah, something like that.
Jack, do you have any thoughts regarding just life safety and awareness of it?
Yeah, this, it's a tough one. And the reason it's tough is, for those people who are forward and tell you what's going on, it's great, but there are a lot of people who do things and change things inside the homes on their own, and you don't find out. And there's cases where firemen have gone in to do a search on the second floor, through a second floor window, and ended up in a closet where they've, you know, and those aren't good things, I mean, obviously. From the other aspect of it, I, I guess my question originally was, if someone's going to do a legitimate conforming, they, there is no CO that's issued at that time for the modifications that are made to that building?
Well, first and foremost, they have to get a zoning approval prior to issuing a permit.
Okay.
And if it was by chance, it could be issued. If it was like a change of use or changing up the inside to...
Right.
As a multifamily, yeah, it would be a CO. And if they're...
So there would, there would be a CO.
Changing the, changing the use, they would have to, you know, bring it up to current standards.
Right. Well, that was my question earlier, and I probably heard it wrong, that it's different than the CO that was originally, I must have misunderstood. So if someone's going to change their configuration in their home for multi-use, multi, from what it currently is, there has to be a permitting process, there's a, so you know about those.
Sure.
The only ones you don't know about are the ones that people are doing it illegally.
Exactly.
So the registering, what's to, I guess, if I'm going to register, am I making it...
Yeah, I'm following.
Only the legal ones are going to register.
Only the legal ones are going to register. The illegal ones are not going to register. So where are we?
If I could, though, the administration understood the council's position when we were talking about this issue months or even a year ago. The idea of amortization was proposed, and we heard the council when you said that there is a place for these uses within these neighborhoods in this day and time. And Councilwoman Shields is shaking her head, and I think we would all agree that there is a need. So we've taken a step back and said, we've tried to hear the council, and we've said, okay, we understand that, maybe we weren't not very forward-thinking. If these types of uses are going to exist within our neighborhoods in the city of Salisbury, we'd like to, for the sake of the occupants, the tenants, those folks that are using these places as their place of abode, I think, as the code reads, we, we just simply want to make sure, because there was some acquiescence on the part of the city over the years, to allow these single-family homes to be carved up into multifamily use with no building permit, no certificate, certificate of occupancy, no real understanding of what they look like inside, and no measures to provide any increased level of protection for the occupants. That's really what we're trying to accomplish here. We're not trying to over-regulate anybody. We're simply saying that we recognize that they're out there, we'd like to have an opportunity to make sure we know where they all are, and a chance to inspect them and require that the life safety conditions be improved minimally for the protection of the occupants and the owners.
Okay.
And I agree with that, and I understand that, and I'm right on board, we're right together. But my issue is still the same issue I've, I've had. For the people who have not, who have done things and have not followed the process, whether it was prior to us instituting it or not, if I've done something illegal, I'm not going to register with you. I'm sorry. So what you're going to end up doing is taking those people who have followed the rules and, and applied for the permit, and I will tell you, the fire department counts a lot on making sure that those, those codes are, are met, because then if the codes are met, we know how to attack them. It's those people where you go in through a window and you're in a closet, where you go, wait a minute, there's four walls here, and there's no way of getting out. That's where the issues come in.
Right.
But those people are not going to, in my opinion, and I might be wrong, are not going to go and voluntary register for this.
I, I would agree that, with you, in that there are some people that will not register. The majority of property owners that have these uses will register. It will afford us the opportunity to go through and perform the inspection, make the recommendation of requirement for the minimum improvements. And if we get to 95% of them, 96% of them, we've put all of those tenants in a better situation, and then when we find that property owner that's unwilling to register and make the improvements that are required, then we deal with them accordingly. So we simply heard the council say, these uses are out there, they're going to stay out there, we're, we're trying to protect the occupants and the property owners, not trying to make, we're not trying to over-regulate the industry. And there will be some that won't comply. I, I mean, I concede to that. It's everywhere. Everybody speeds, everybody runs red lights, but...
This proposal deals with a person who fails to register by basically taking away his grandfathered status. So that, I guess, in the case of 507 Poplar Hill, if, if that were an illegal residence and the person did not register, then the law, there would be no argument you could make that you were equitably estoped or anything else. The code would find because you failed to register, you failed to allow us to inspect the property, that you no longer have that favored nonconforming use status. That's how they deal with a person who doesn't come forward. If there's a problem, if that individual is discovered, then they're deemed non, you know, as an illegal use. Whereas now, they can argue, I am legal, you just didn't know I did this 40 years ago. That's an argument they can make, but if they, under this registration procedure, they could no longer make that argument.
Okay. Tom, do you have something?
Well, I was just thinking, if they're not grandfather, if they're illegal, they're not grandfathered, so, so what if they lose their grandfathering status they didn't have it to begin with? I still don't see how that, in, necessarily see how that entices them to come forward and register. If, one, they're caught, that gives a different set of, as you just explained, a different set of options for us, less options for them, but...
Right, so why would a legal, nonconforming fail to register? They wouldn't, they would definitely register.
Right.
So they'd lose nothing.
And we already know about them.
Right, so we already know about this.
Because they follow the process.
But what you don't have right now is the opportunity for the person in the unit on the first floor right who has a stove fire, there's no indication for the person who's on the third floor left to know that that's occurring downstairs, because those properties were not designed to be used that way. That's what we're trying to help.
Yeah, but, okay, so, so when I look at the nonconforming use proposed safety regulations in here, all of those things sound wonderful, emergency lighting, illuminated exit signage, fire alarm system, portable, portable fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide alarms, windows and bedrooms in good working order, smoke alarms installed, all of that makes sense to me. The question, and, and Tom, you know, I didn't associate this with the point that you were making when we discussed amortization, and council felt that that was not a good policy approach. You know, I, I think, I still see this as a path, and maybe I'm wrong, but this seems like it's step one of two in, in implementing amortization without getting council to vote on amortization yet. You know, that's what it looks like to me.
That's what it feels like to me.
You know, rather than, why don't we adopt, you know, proposed safety regulations that simply address it from that standpoint in all, you know, non-single-family units in R5, R8, R10, or whatever?
In effect, you are doing that. The only thing we're doing by creating the registry and a penalty for failing to register is that we're requiring that the property owners come forward and let us know where they are, because otherwise, it's just, well, that kind of looks like a multifamily use, I don't know.
Well, do, I mean, do those properties also have to be registered rental units?
They do.
So they're registering?
To an extent, we have a registry, so we would sort of know where to look.
And there's already, there's already a tech, a tool now that they would lose any grandfathering through over occupancy or, you know, and, and that actually references the housing sections of the code and the building sections of the code already. And in effect, the result is already in law.
Here's, here's...
Except for the improvements that we would be requiring by going through the exercise, to say that if you are converted to a family home, you have to do X, Y.
So again, we could, we could adopt the proposed sa, safety regulations, which, emergency lighting, again, exit signage, fire alarm, you know, fire extinguisher.
That's all good.
That's the goal.
That's good stuff. I mean, we could certainly, I mean, that's not, that's not proposed to be adopted as part of this right now, but, you know, that's included in our packet. And I like, I like the, I like smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms, especially after, you know, Princess Anne incident, but...
There's another question. It says that they would lose their grandfathering. A lot of these buildings are on lots, if they were single-family, they were still nonconforming, legal nonconforming, because the house was too big for the lot. So they're already nonconforming, so do they lose that too? Do we have to tear down the building?
No, we got to fix that, because we need to change our zoning code, because those laws are, again, completely outdated.
And does this apply to every nonconforming use that we have citywide, not just ones that have been converted to multifamily? I mean, is it commercial and residential, and whether they've been converted or they're single-family, owner-occupied, rental? I mean, they're all nonconforming, and I think we're really broad...
So again, I...
Well, in this case, we're, it's R5, R8, R10.
So again, going back to, you know, the adoption of the stand, the safety standards, that's of interest to me. The rest of this is really not, and certainly not right now, you know, until the case on, what is it, 507?
Seven.
Until that's settled through the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court or wherever it goes, then I wouldn't even touch this.
Yeah, this wouldn't affect the single-family home on too small a lot. This specifically is targeting single-family dwellings used continuously as multifamily dwellings, so it, that's, that's what's targeted here, that's what would have to register.
May I?
Yes.
First of all, in the paragraph where it says the theory of zoning ordinance is that, that the nonconforming use is determined to public interest and in periphrasis, health, safety, morals, and welfare, which justifies the need of a nonconforming use registered. What does morals have to do with, with nonconforming use? What are you talking about morals, I see it? It's...
The line?
It's in something, it's in the memo.
Fourth paragraph of the memo.
What does, what does that have to do with anything, morals? Who judges that? We're, we're making a judgment call about people's morality, you know? I don't think that has anything to do with housing. I do agree with, with present day about maybe emergency lighting and, and make sure you had the smoke detectors, et cetera, et cetera, because they even decreased your insurance if you had those things, I guess.
Is that state, I don't know?
It may be, I don't know. But anyway, I have a problem with my neighborhood in my district that people live in these homes, grandfathered in, nonconformal, legal, illegal, because there's a need for it. If there wasn't a need for it, you wouldn't have it. And what we're doing, when people hear us on PAC 14, and we're just regulating, 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 making laws, making laws, regulating, no wonder people don't want to come into the city and want to build outside of the city because of the regulations we're putting on people, not just, especially runners and people that's less fortunate than others. We have people that come from different countries, we have people that can't afford an apartment, may live in a room, and I do know one place that the people that live there are family, almost like family. They cook dinner on Sundays together, they look out for one another, they make sure they're, the people that are, put their trash out in, in time, because they lived there for a long period of time. You have some people that have lived in these homes, I've been back in my neighborhood since 81, has been in the neighborhood since I've been there. So they're really a regular people. So when you make these things illegal, you're basically going to put eventually people out on the street who cannot afford an apartment or a busy apartment, because the people cannot afford 750, 850 rent, and, and also the electric bill, which is outrageous, gas bill, water bill, and all that kind of stuff. So I'm not for this particular law, I am for the safety, the safety aspect of it. I don't like the word, somebody's morals and stuff.
Shane, can I, may I?
Yes.
Because I just, I want to defend Mr. Holland on that for a second, because the sentence is right. The theory of the zoning ordinance is that the nonconforming use is detrimental to public interest, health, safety, morals, and welfare, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the theory's wrong, and the zoning is wrong.
What's morals?
I'm saying, I'm saying that sentence is right, but the theory behind it has been disproven time and again, and most cities are moving away from this type of zoning ordinance. We're moving toward four base codes, we're moving far, far away from this type of zoning ordinance, so...
I'm for the safety aspect of it.
Okay. So let, I mean, so why don't we, I mean, is there council consensus to see a draft version of the adoption of the safety standards?
Yes. I'm for the safety.
I just have a couple of comments about, I'm not sure if it would still fit under the safety standards or not, probably. The second document, application for registration for residential nonconforming use, that first section, standards affecting nonconforming uses, number four, any nonconforming use dependent upon a building that has been declared dangerous and/or condemned pursuant to the City Housing Standards Code will be considered terminated upon declaration of order. We do that now, as, I believe, it's pretty standard, but this is saying that somewhere in, in this piece, it had language about condemning the property. So I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm trying to figure out why I have this note here. It says, I ask myself, does this include a water shut-off? So if they, oh, if it was condemned for any reason, that they would lose their grandfathering, and does that include, like, a water shut-off? Are we taking away their, their legal nonconforming use status if the water's shut off for some reason?
I would say no. Again, this is, this is just a draft to this, this registration application, but I, I wouldn't think that you would lose a nonconforming use for having a water shut-off. My, my interpretation of condemnation is a fire, where they gutted, or 50% or more destroyed.
Right, that's where it talked about it, but it said, or condemned for any reason, and that's what got my attention.
Not having water would constitute a condemnation.
Right.
Because it is one of the minimum liability requirements.
Right, so does, so does somebody living in that place, not paying the water bill on time, getting it shut off, cause the owner to lose their, I mean, the owners usually get the bill anyway.
Cause the entire building to be condemned.
Be condemned and lose their grandfathering.
Yeah, it wouldn't cause the whole building, because it should be...
Condemn a unit in a, in a, like that?
Do most of them have separate meters?
No.
Water meters? That would be one water meter, so... Well, then I would believe that the, and I, we have some landlords here that could speak on that. Do, are they, are they metered separately or are they metered altogether? Would you have...
Some, some are.
That's what I, that's what I've seen, I've seen both.
Most are not metered separately. You have three or four in a building.
Right, and then you split the bill up, or the tenants.
Does the bill come to you then?
It comes to the, it comes to the owner, who then turns around and sends it.
So you would never let the bill be late? You would never let it?
Well, I wouldn't, but that's, that's next. The theory is that the tenant's obligation is to pay the bill. Legally, the way the code is set up, over much of that stage, over the last number of years, the bill always goes to the proprietor, property owner. the last number of years, the bill always goes to the proprietor, property owner, you want to eat it. It goes, the city doesn't want to chase tenants apparently to take water. So, God, I understand it, but serious issue with respect to the notion that if you've got four units and a property gets one water bill, one of the tenants doesn't pay, and the landlord wouldn't pay, if you condemn, I, I don't know how you condemn a unit. I don't, you know, I don't have a legal.
We have, we have condemned a unit before. If there's a fire in one unit, just say the unit is uninhabitable, we have condemned a unit. Um, and lack of water is a reason to condemn. No, heat in a unit is a reason to condemn.
Yeah. So I don't know whether that part plays into what we were talking about with the safety can, doing, just addressing the safety issue, if that would come into play.
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't come into play at all.
But we would not condemn the whole building. It would not affect that. It wouldn't cause them to lose, to lose the use for the whole building.
So, my sense right now is that, um, and, and I'm just put, putting this out on the table, is that we would at least want to table this indefinitely until, um, there was a result of the, you know, five oh seven, Poplar Hill case. Um, but, uh, I, I'm not interested in bringing this forward to legislative session right now.
No, I, I, I do, though, like, the safety additional thing. And since we already have a list, we already have registration for rentals, you couldn't probably inspect all those in a, in a year.
Yeah, I mean, this, that could be applied to any rental unit.
We have a good place to start.
Right.
Because I'm all for making sure that everything is, is, uh, safe inside.
Those standards, I mean, you know, those safety standards could be applied. And I assume there are some safety standards already, correct? Minimum life safety requirements? Are these different than those minimum life safety requirements?
These are, yes.
Okay. Um, can, I mean, could we see something that articulated how they're different? You know, differentiated between this list and what's currently required?
I'm sorry, get a, a question. So, the things that we mentioned are not in the minimum standards for-
They're, they're above. They, they're included and, and go beyond.
So some of them are. I mean, this one's, one of them's in IBC.
Like, like Tom explained.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and a number of these, uh, uses were put in a place year, many, many years ago, where they didn't, they didn't have the standards that they do today. Hard lights, smoke detectors, or if you have a, if you have a, a building where you have numerous units inside that converge in one point to go out, that's where you need your emergency lighting and, you know, you know, a lit exit sign. If they have a separate entrance, exit, it's not needed. But it's where you have the high density converging into one, one area for, um, you know, getting out of the building, the top of the manor. And, you know, back, you know, back in the days, they, they didn't have that.
The, the other thing is, this is, it's proposed in here as a separate inspection that could be done in coordination with the rental inspection, but still charges an additional fee. So, if we were to look at that, I would say that, I would favor that being done in conjunction with the rental inspection, the, the registration inspection, um, at the same, I mean, you're already there. I don't know that we need another fee.
One fell swoop.
Right.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about it.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I would think that just the process of doing it becomes that much easier when you have a change in tenant or a change in owner, you know, rather than set, you know, multiple inspections ending up in a cycle where you're inconveniencing a tenant, or, you know, potentially violating the tenant's rights, you know, where you're, uh, imposing an inspection on them through the landlord, uh, which I know can be problematic as well, so.
Yeah. That can be done. That'll be a discussion.
To put this-
From that, yeah. I'll, I'll be back here for a discussion for that.
Thank you.
So, all right. So, uh, there's council consensus to table that indefinitely, and there's council consensus that we'd like to see the sa- life safety standards. You know, I, I think at first, I just want to see it, why this list is different, or how this list is different from what the current minimum standard is.
Yeah, every time you adopt a new building code, anything prior to that is, is grandfathered.
Well, so is all of this adopted in the twenty fifteen codes? Or, you know, will all of this, is all of this in the twenty fifteen IBC?
Yeah, for, for anything moving forward.
Okay, but, but make it retroactive.
Because when we adopt the fifteen codes, anything prior to that, it's, it's grandfathered.
Okay. So these are the minimum life safety requirements from twenty fifteen four?
It's new construction.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I just, I understand that.
We're asking that, that these improvements be made to existing structures in order to bring them up to a higher level of safety.
I get it.
Okay. And, and five of the six boards are not currently required.
And let me just say, I'm not a firefighter, like, uh, our friend at the end of the table here, but, um, I would think that you wouldn't want a dramatic difference between the life safety standards of new construction and, you know, uh, existing building stock.
There is, though.
And I'm sure you're gonna have to have some difference, because certain things are, you know, would be cost prohibitive to adapt, but-
Yeah, I mean-
You're not gonna be able to run dark smoke detectors. It's, it's, it's gonna be cost prohibitive.
And the balloon construction is there, and you're not gonna change the balloon construction. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that can't be, but there are, there are reasonable, positive things that could be done to protect lives. That's what we need to do.
Can we see something?
Yeah. I would like somebody to look into while you're doing that, too. The carbon monoxide, uh, requirement for the detector, because I'm in a multifamily unit, and it's been around for a number of years, and they came and put them in all the units, in every room in all the units. And I seem to recall from MML's Legislative Committee, that there was a requirement to do that in multifamily. So, we may already have that requirement and some others. I'm, I'm just not sure.
Okay.
We don't in property maintenance currently. We can-
It's not in property maintenance code currently, but it could be at the state level.
No, I mean, the state, the state law, I think.
I will look into, I'll, I'll research that.
Could you just let us-
They have the condo smoke-
Condo smoke CO.
I will look into that and get that.
Okay.
What exactly you want? You want the life safety standards put into some type of draft?
And maybe even before that, or simultaneously, just a comparison of what the minimum standards are and what is being proposed. So we can look at that. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is PAC fourteen audit requirements. Mr. Tillman. Craig, do you want to come forward? You want to join us up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you join us?
Come on down.
Why are people leaving? Don't you all want to hear?
They heard what they heard.
All right.
Yeah.
Mark, are you gonna be presenting this?
Yeah. The, the council was interested in eliminating the requirement for the audit every four years.
Yes.
And before I could do that, I asked for a copy of the existing contract, and this is the one I got that's expired. Um, I'm guessing it was, you know, the, the agreement with PAC fourteen and public access is really all part of Comcast's obligation to provide such a channel for, uh, you know, public broadcasting or, or public access. And, uh, that contract is still being negotiated. Um, I don't know that any of us will live to see that finalized, because Comcast is really dug in its heels and, you know, I think they're just a monopoly that's unbelievable. But, um, you know, the, a- as far as what we could do at this point is, we probably should develop a new contract that assumes we're gonna negotiate something with Comcast eventually, um, and that extends the time period for PAC fourteen. The only thing we would need to do is just change that one affected section back there that requires the audit at least once every four years, and I would recommend that it be, uh, that we require an audit by a certified public accountant only when demanded by the city or recommended by the accountants for PAC fourteen. If the accountants found some irregularities when they were doing their work and recommended an audit, then we should insist upon one, just as if the city had concerns that money was being, you know, misspent or stolen, that we could also demand one. But short of that, it will-
They do an annual review.
Yeah.
This recommendation actually came from the audit, or, yeah, from, from PKS.
Yeah. Because you don't raise the threshold of money that requires it.
Right. And they do an annual review, and they feel that's sufficient. But like you said, and you probably didn't get my email on, you've been in meetings all day, probably.
Yeah, I've, I've been, uh-
I did talk to the, if, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I did talk to, uh, Mr. Robinson today. He just got back from vacation. He said, uh, basically what you said, there's two options. We can just extend the contract until the new agreement is in place, and then execute a new contract. But he also said that contract's between the city and PAC fourteen. So if you want to extend it and, and put the new agreement in there now, it's fine. Or you could wait, or that, extend it and then execute a new contract when the Comcast city negotiations are finished.
Yeah.
Or do a new contract now excluding any changes that may come with Comcast regarding what peg fees or possible franchise.
And, and that's what I would recommend, that we just do a contract so that we have an agreement with PAC fourteen contingent upon, you know, being finalized when the Comcast agreement.
He also recommended that you should be able to, you know, have a, request an audit whenever you see fit.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, so, I, I think I understand that, Mr. Tillman. My, my concern is that, um, if there are major changes with the agreement with Comcast, um, I would want a new contract wholesale at that point. So-
I would just put a contingency in anything that we sign that says when, when the, that anything we agree upon is, is contingent upon it fitting within the new Comcast agreement.
So why can't, why couldn't we simply extend the current contract until we sign the-
You can. That's fine.
Let me, when was the last, you just did an audit.
We just did an audit, two thousand and fourteen.
So we have four years anyway, right?
Right.
So we can wait till we get the, uh, we could just do an extension of this.
Right.
Or an agreement to continue this.
Right. And, and you will be involved in the execution of the, of the contract and of the agreement.
It's just that the end you-
I just want to make sure that we don't forget in that time, in that time period.
Oh, no.
We don't forget to cut the piece that says, I don't-
No, I, what I'm gonna do is prepare a resolution for you to approve a new contract, but the board at PAC fourteen also has to approve it as well. And they, when were they gonna meet?
Uh, May thirteenth.
Okay. So we'll try and get it dealt with at that time.
All right, good.
Second Wednesday, May twenty.
So would, just be until the Comcast-
So an extension, and we'll begin, or, or whenever you are going to begin writing that new contract?
Well, the, we just need to have a, some kind of extension, because right now, this one is expired. So, there is no agreement. It, I think the way we're, we're working with Comcast now is the, things are staying the same until the final agreement is reached. So, that's kind of what we would do with PAC fourteen as well.
So let's extend it until, you know, some reasonable amount of time that we think we'll get a, a agreement with Comcast.
Next month, I'm confident.
Could we say that-
Let's, so let's make it twenty-four months. Well, let's extend it for twenty months.
Good idea.
Because we do all run at the same time, and there is that extremely remote possibility that none of us return to this table, and that Comcast isn't finished before that period of time. When we do this resolution, could we, uh, make clear that, uh, we're extending the contract except for that section C that says about the audit part? And that way, it's clear going forward that that was, and we don't forget to take that part out.
Can we do something like that?
Right. And I, but I would recommend that we go ahead and say that, as they recommended, that upon demand, the city could get an audit.
Right.
But, I mean, obviously, the city doesn't intend to do that unless some, something-
Instead of eliminating, we could replace that language.
Right. That, and I've, I've already got some language that says, if recommended by PAC fourteen's accountants, or if demanded by the city.
Right.
Otherwise, there would be no-
Rather than just an extension of what we have until we deal with Comcast.
Yes. Extend it with that language, yes. Yes. That's what I meant to say.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it was clear. Thank you.
Is there council consensus to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Ezino?
Almost finished.
I wish renegotiation was ahead. Thank you.
All of us do.
Never.
We should see my file.
Oh, man, poor town. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
There's a reason they're the most hated company in America.
All right. Um, next up is, uh, the Wells Fargo donation of eight oh six North Division. Ms. Hudson?
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. I'm here to request that the, um, council move forward a resolution to accept a donation by Wells Fargo Bank of eight oh six North Division Street.
And?
Uh, I didn't actually see it, but it's off near, I think, Philadelphia Avenue.
It's two, two houses on, past Philadelphia Avenue on the left-hand side headed north.
Okay.
Yellow, two-story.
Two houses north of Philadelphia.
I've only seen it.
Is it called No Cherry and, um, what did it?
It's mid-block.
No, it's in the middle of a block, between Philadelphia and, what's north of that?
New York.
New York.
And they've offered ten thousand dollars in addition to that?
Yes.
Except for demolition purposes, or?
We can use it as we see fit, either to rehabilitate it or to demolish it.
Do we have any sense of which we would need to do?
Um, I think Ms. Stam said it probably needs to be demolished. But she hasn't been able to go inside to see what it actually looks like.
Okay.
It's not in too bad a shape. I had a chance to take a look at it through the windows when they first, um, reached out to us, but likely, um, raising it would be the, the best way to go. Just get it down and just get it cleaned up.
It's the last, does anybody remember what the last cost was for raising a house?
Uh, it's, they're, they're in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen, but we're actually talking with, um, Mr. Moles and Mr. Lennon at the city yard about doing our own demolition. So now we'd be down to just tipping fees. Years ago, we were taking, uh, properties down ourselves, and-
How old was that happen?
When Mr. Jacobs, uh, was-
It was built nineteen twenty.
He stopped doing it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of what you said.
They stopped, the city used to take properties down. We had the equipment and resources for it, but, um, one of the former public works directors just stopped doing it for whatever reason. So we can do it much cheaper if we do it ourselves.
Okay. Let's do that.
Well, I, I know Mr. Lennon would love nothing more than to get on his exit door and take that front.
And to take a building down.
But you said it wasn't in bad shape, so why would you turn it down?
It, it has potential, but based on what we're finding out on the, uh, property more north of that, a hundred thousand dollars to rehabilitate that receivership property, I'm wondering if it might not be better to just take it down and start over. Because of the, you know, it's not as energy efficient.
What can you build on it, again?
Let's build a lot, yes.
But, yeah, that's, I mean, that's the question. Is it, you know, can you afford to renovate it and then actually sell it and make money off of it?
Similar to what the people did on Isabella Street. Is that house in better condition? The house that they're redoing on Isabella Street? The Wycombe County Historical?
That was a brush.
It's in, it's in similar condition.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
Yeah, it's right next to the apartment complex.
That's a much smaller than our house, the building.
Let me see. Can I see that?
Let me see.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. It's like the same, because my mother used to live on North Division Street. And that big, hides a mold, too, since.
Indeed.
You know, I don't care what you do with it. It doesn't look like a, it doesn't look like a castle, so, you know.
No. So I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to accept the donation.
In turn, yeah. It's not one of my favorite houses.
The administration can do with it as it sees fit. Is there council consensus to accept the donation?
Yes.
All right. So we'll move this to legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay.
There's a happy face.
Next item on our agenda is an update to the Feldman's right-of-way agreement, and I know Mr. Lennox is out of town, so.
He provided a memo. I'm sure council's had the opportunity to read through that. Um, currently, work is going on at the former Feldman's property. Um, they've done some work, made some minor revisions to the approved by retention area and impervious service, surface, surface calculations. Um, all of that's been submitted to public works. Uh, there's a site plan attached, and it's showing the area where the proposed right-of-way would be. It's very tiny and difficult to see, but, um, I'm of the, um, the impression now that Mr. Gillis is not looking for any, um, compensation from the city that would be gifted.
So, pre- previous standing agreements from whatever it was, ten years ago with council, um, he's gonna do us one better?
Yeah.
All right. That's excellent. All right, that's excellent. The, the one request that I would have is that the, that be communicated to Mr. Gillis is that the, the standard of the Riverwalk meet the standard of the Riverwalk that we're getting ready to treat the rest of the Riverwalk with, so that the same surface treatment be applied.
And that's, I know, Mr. Moles was looking at.
Mr. Moles has it in our, it's in the public works.
You can't do the exposed aggregate anymore, so.
Yeah, the one thing, they, I have to look at that when it gets updated, he may have a section, a boardwalk section in there as opposed to concrete bridge.
He shows, he shows it all as concrete.
Does he?
He does.
Okay, I'm just making sure that, it was an earlier version where it was boardwalk over top of the buyer retention area.
He sho- he shows the whole thing as, as boardwalk, or as, as concrete Riverwalk.
It's difficult to see, it's tiny.
Okay, good.
The graphic invention used anyways, concrete route.
Okay, thank you.
And is that, that's something we can do through the public works agreement, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Why don't you stay up here, cause the next item is you.
Next item anyway.
Afternoon, and, and Mr. Stevenson, I'm sorry, give me one second, Mike, do you mind contacting the chief and letting her know that we're a little bit ahead?
Yeah, I'll step out and let her know.
Fifteen minutes out of schedule or something.
Yeah, one of the things when we do the Riverwalk with the construction will be take possession of the patterns after it's done, so whenever we have any repairs to the concrete that we do, we'll be able to utilize those patterns.
Okay, thank you. So that was just an update for council, since we've talked about it and had it on our pending items forever, so we don't need to take any action. Next item on our agenda, however, is the green team. So, Mr. Moles?
Thank you.
Green team.
Yes, I didn't know whether to be Mr. Clean or, is he doing the S R, not Green? But this, this project follows up on some previous actions that council has made, and that was in your packets there. The first one was the Shore Power Project, which Council President Day was involved with, we had a big rollout on that, where the Washington College Environment, Center for Environmental, Environment and Society is working on updating our carbon footprint and analyzing our energy usage. And part of that memorandum of understanding that was approved between the council on the Shore Power Project was to work towards becoming a sustainable community. Along that line also then, we completed some tasks to be registered as a Sustainable Maryland Certified Community, that was approved by Resolution 2452 back in October 2014, supporting participation in the program. So in order to become fully certified, what the city has to do is complete some action items and what the Sustainable Maryland Certified Community has a flyer that they put together, that was in your packet, and on the back of it are the different action items that are part of it. One of the, we're very confident that we will meet the goals of getting 150 points for becoming registered as a sustainable community, but one of the things that we, as a mandatory action that we have to do is create a green team. This is an advisory group of citizens that would help review and, and the different projects that the city would move forward with in terms of becoming sustainable and then, over a period of time, continuing to do additional projects to maintain that sustainability in terms of these action items. And over a period of time, these, this list could get larger as, as more opportunities come about, but we've gone through that with them and generated the point ratings that we feel we've already completed. An example, that would be the community garden project that we did, that, that gets us some points. So coming up with, I think the, the number, we were coming up with was almost 180 points, but that would include the 10 points, it was mandatory to create the green team, and the additional 10 points that was mandatory for the green team to create an action plan. And there, and on the website, there are parameters and guidance that are provided for this group to do that. So we provided that information, what I did was put together a draft resolution, very straightforward, using some of the language that was provided through the Sustainable Maryland website for consideration. It follows on the, the verbiage that was used to create the Bicycle Advisory Committee as, so we didn't want recreating the wheel. That's kind of where we are in terms of, we're looking at a minimum of five members to, to be on the green team. I had done a presentation, Jake had another commitment at Salisbury University, and towards the end of that, I put a little plug in for anybody that were looking for forming this green team, and I had three students come up to me at the end of that that were interested in being part of it, so. Nice environmental program there, so it has some definite interest and traction there if we want to proceed with that.
I mean, I, I just, I, when I looked at the Sustainable Maryland list originally, I thought, wow, would, I don't know if we'll get there. Looking at it yesterday, I counted 245 points that I thought we were up to, and there's plenty I wasn't sure about. And I remember when this was first created, when this program was created, copying or, you know, designed after Sustainable Jersey, the first in the country, and, you know, it was designed to be very, very difficult and very, very cumbersome and very, very rare that this honor would be bestowed on a community, and, you know, it's pretty cool that we're well over the minimum requirements.
I remember probably two and a half, three years ago with MML Fall Conference, bringing that back and going, we already have the points, but I don't remember there being the mand- any mandatories on there then, so this isn't moving, not really moving target, target, but it's changing, it's up, being updated, right?
Yes, yes, it'll evolve as, as more sustainable ideas are there to get implemented. The one thing I know when, when Jake and I had talked about the number of points we're getting, what I wasn't sure about was if we get one community garden, do we get an extra 20 points for a second one?
Yeah. That's. He was double-tipping, I get a couple of points out of maybe. Oh, no, 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 that was, I only counted the one community garden, but if you add the four others, so, yeah, we're through the roof.
Did we get any points for recycling those 20 tons of electronics?
I.
And the 600 televisions that you just sold for a buck?
For five bucks.
Five dollars.
If, if there's any way I can do it, I will try. I'm just more tickled pink that we can get rid of the darn things next week, yep.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, you're looking for council to consider the adoption of this creation of the green team. You know, the composition, I think, makes sense to me, is fine by me, the whole process, you know, it does look like it's parallel to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and many of our other committees, it makes sense to me.
And it has staggered terms.
And it has staggered, actually has.
Yeah, I was caught up on that and everything. Yeah, again, when we put it together and the discussion Tom Stevenson and I had as to whether a resolution of this nature, whether you wanted Mark to review that, but that's your choice at this point, I don't know.
I think we're okay with it.
Mark, any concerns, any thoughts?
No.
Any other comments, questions, concerns from council?
Consent agenda.
Well, let's, let's bring it, let's separate it from the consent agenda just so that we.
Yeah, yeah, let's take some.
We'll talk.
Okay. Council consensus to move it forward, or Tim, you have something?
Yes.
Okay, yes, but Tim?
Yes, I had another question, but this, I don't know if the butterfly garden will fall into it, but can we get that staked out so we know where it is and we can start on it?
Yeah, have you met?
Just some plastic stakes would be good or whatever, so.
I haven't met with anybody, but I know Mrs. Rodriguez and Councilwoman Mitchell, did you talk to her as well?
Yeah, I've been in touch with her as well, she's kind of.
We're ready to roll with it, yeah.
I'm sorry?
We were ready to roll with it, they have some plantings and they have the kids and.
Right, but where?
That's where it was, we were going to be at the Marina property.
I called, I guess.
It was that.
Bridge, bridge tender.
Doing what? What are you doing?
Okay, is that where ours is gonna be?
That was the discussion, I think.
That's what I thought we were gonna do, cause we checked to see if there was a yard hydrant there.
I love it, yeah. Great, so can we, can we stake out an area there?
Yeah, how, how much space do you need?
I'd say 10 by 10 would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, or a little greater than that if you can squeak them out.
So one of my thoughts was in the park, in the area where we have the growth, that might be some, nice to draw some butterflies in there, but depending on the, the species of butterfly plant that you get, they can be creepy crawlers, so you have to be careful about where, where you put them.
What is, well, it's sustain water.
They need water nearby.
I mean, I, I'm trying to say the flooding.
Oh, yes, I mean, you know, just.
Yeah, I mean, because will they live?
Could look killing.
Well, kill them with the old, if we have flooding issues, will they?
Oh, no, no.
It won't hurt them.
It'll hurt, it'll be pretty good, yeah. Whatever we plant there will be fine.
Yeah, so 10 by 10 area at the bridge tenders spot, we could.
Great, yeah.